I'd like to call the school board meeting of the city of Manassas to order. If everyone can stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we need to make a motion. Ms. Garza, can you call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seberg. Vice Chair Stevens.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Ball.
Here.
Mr. Ichbal.
Here.
Ms. Wabeepe.
Here.
And Ms. Island. Thank you.
Superintendent Newman, do you have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Okay. Wait, wait, do you? Chair Seberg. Okay. In accordance with the school board policy, BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, Chairman, Chair Susan Seberg notified Vice Chair Lisa Stevens that she was requesting permission from the board to electronically participate in the regular business meeting due to a medical condition. Can I get a motion?
Vice Chair, I'd like to make, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approves Chair Suzanne Seberg to participate remotely.
Second. I have a motion made by Jill Spall and seconded by Robin Williams that the school board of the city of Manassas approve Chair Suzanne Seberg to participate remotely. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Alright.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, okay. Can I get approval of the agenda?
I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Jill Spall made a motion seconded by Robin Williams that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Now for the superintendent's spotlights.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. Good evening to other members of the board and certainly good evening to everyone that has joined us tonight. It's so great to see all the smiling faces in the audience with us. I am happy to stand before you tonight with a couple of spotlights. At this time, if you all would like to join me down front, we will begin with our Apple and Pear Award winners for tonight. Our Apple and Pear Award recognitions are the school board's way of saying thank you to our instructional staff, which is the Apple Award, and for our support staff, those that support instruction behind the scenes through the Pear Award recognition. So tonight, we will begin with our Apple Award nominations or winners for this evening. We'll begin with Baldwin Elementary Sarah Corredetti. I believe she could not be with us tonight, but Ms. Corredetti is a 4th grade ESOL teacher at Baldwin Elementary, and we certainly congratulate her in her absence. From Dean Elementary School, Donna West. Ms. West is a kindergarten teacher here at Jenny Dean, and we congratulate her. From Hayden Elementary School, Ms. Tracy Hammond. And Ms. Hammond, please remain at the front as I continue to call our names tonight. Ms. Hammond is a special education teacher who brings joy, positivity, and enthusiasm to Hayden. We see the passion and dedication that she gives when working with her students. Hayden says they are happy to have a resource like her with so much experience that benefits students and their families. Congratulations, Ms. Hammond. Round Elementary School, Sam Yulyn. Ms. Luke Yulyn is the lead ESOL teacher at Round, and so we congratulate her in her absence. From Weems Elementary School, Sam Alba. Sam Alba is a 4th grade teacher who shows passion for teaching. Mr. Alba's intensity for teaching has made him known around the building, is that right there? As one who is principled, friendly, and willing to share. He is an asset to the Weems staff and to their families. Congratulations, Mr. Alba. Thank you very much. Mayfield Intermediate, Kristy Holbrook. Ms. Holbrook, don't you try to get away too. You stay up here with us, okay? Ms. Holbrook was nominated by four different staff members for this award. She is the definition of excellence in her position as a special education teacher. She not only focuses on the importance of education, but also puts her students' mental and emotional needs first. Ms. Holbrook comes in daily and faces any challenges with a positive attitude and a sweet smile. There it is. Congratulations. Thank you. From Baldwin Intermediate, Jen Weiser. Jen Weiser exudes passion, focus, and purpose each and every day as a 5th grade teacher. Her thirst for continued growth as a professional is evident in her willingness to take risk, implement new instruction, and step up as a leader at Baldwin Intermediate School. She is a role model for other educators and is an asset to her students, community, and her school. Congratulations, Ms. Weiser. Metz Middle School, Lerline Nester. ESOL is rocking tonight. Ms. Nester is an ESOL teacher at Metz, so congratulations to her. And from Osborne High School, Stacy Rubach. Ms. Rubach is a guitar teacher who not only expertly teaches students how to play guitar, but respectfully and compassionately teaches life lessons about being a contributing member of our school community. She is often sought out for her counsel on situational guidance regarding classroom management, instruction, and other school-related matters. Congratulations to Ms. Rubach. And at this time, I'll take a group photo of all of you with our board members and Dr. Newman. And family members, once I'm done, you're welcome to take some as well. I'm getting ready to say this. From Round Elementary School, Sam Yulyn is the lead ESOL teacher, and the kind of teacher you want for your own children. She is dedicated to providing the best resources and instruction for every child. She cares deeply about every child on her caseload. Round says they are lucky to have such a dedicated, smart, and caring team member. Catch your breath and take a smile. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, next, we have our Pear Awards for our support personnel. We will start with Baldwin Elementary School, Andrew Donovan. He is an instructional assistant, and he is a force to be reckoned with, okay? He is patient, caring, kind, considerate, loving, and very professional. He always uses best practices in the classroom. He gives great advice to the students in his care and wants them all to succeed. Thank you so much. Congratulations. From Dean Elementary, Candy Olgas. Ms. Olgas is Dean's cafeteria manager. She always has a kind word and a big smile for every student, even on the busiest days. And I hope some of you have seen some of the great displays of Dean's work here on our social media from their food services department. It's been awesome. She thinks outside the box to ensure that all students are well-fed for breakfast and lunch. She truly will go the extra mile for the students at Jenny Dean. Congratulations, Ms. Olgas. Thank you. Our next Pear Award goes to Hayden Elementary School's Connor Riley. Mr. Riley is an instructional assistant who is always ready for the school day with a big smile on his face. He is a hard worker and always willing to give a helping hand. Hayden's students love seeing him and working in small groups with him. Congratulations. From Round Elementary School, Noe Garcia. Ms. Garcia is the school cafeteria manager and is considered to be the cornerstone to the Round family, so congratulations in her absence. From Weems Elementary School, Jackson Muse. Jackson Muse took on the classroom facilitator position, and he has been an invaluable asset to the 4th grade team. Now that virtual teachers have been added to the classroom, Mr. Muse is rocking the technology necessary to be the classroom facilitator. He is a positive team leader in his CLT role, and Weems says they are lucky to have him in the Wildcat family. Congratulations. Next, we have Baldwin Intermediate School, Angela Graham. Angela Graham is an instructional assistant who shows exemplary motivation as she continues to support Baldwin Intermediate's STEM classes. She prides herself on building relationships with students throughout the building. She has truly been a great value to her building. Congratulations. From Mayfield Intermediate, Elsa Alfonso Rodriguez. Come on down. Elsa Alfonso Rodriguez is the Mayfield greeter. She is always willing to go above and beyond to help in whatever situation she is needed. She is the first face you see when you walk into Mayfield and is the friendly face greeting everyone who enters the building. Congratulations and thank you. Metz Middle School, Melissa Chicas. Ms. Chicas is a security officer and is a true example of the Metz way. She keeps the Metz family safe and secure, always guiding the students with encouragement. You can often find her going above and beyond the call of duty, and we congratulate her tonight on being recognized. Thank you. And from Osborne High School, Juana Batris. So when you see her, Ms. Batris is the head custodian at Osborne High School, so please make sure you congratulate her. From Transportation, Gretchen Cannon. Ms. Cannon is the transportation dispatcher. Thank you all so much. And thank you, everyone, for your patience. I believe that's important to let our family celebrate each other. Thank you so much. The last year has brought many challenges, but Ms. Cannon has exceeded expectations Chair Stevens, we have, Vice Chair Stevens, we have one more recognition tonight. daily. Give people a chance to get settled. Her dedication to ensuring MCPS students get to school safely and on time is simply amazing. The VSBA, Virginia School Board Association recognizes school board members for their dedication, Transportation says they are a better department because of Ms. Cannon's experience, dedication, and constant hard work. Congratulations. Those are all of our Pear Award winners for tonight, so if you can all just join us over time, and hard work in improving boardmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, here for a picture. board development and training, and for active involvement in the association. Board members earn credits for VSBA Academy Awards, which are based on their participation in VSBA-sponsored events or activities from the period of July 1st to June 30th of each year. The VSBA Academy Awards are presented annually to school board members across the state, superintendents, and/or staff members who meet the requirements of each level. The awards for MCPS this year are as follows. We have, you can see a sample of the certificate on the screen here. The H certificate is awarded or presented to each person for your commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the VSBA School Board Academy, and this is for the period of 2020 to 2021. So we start off with the Award of Recognition, and that one goes to Mr. Alex Ichbal and to Alba Garza. That is basically for 15 credits. The next level is Award of Achievement, which is for 24 credits, and this one receives a certificate and a bronze pin. This goes to Ms. Lisa Stevens, Charles, I'm sorry, Carl Hollingsworth, Christina Brooks, and to Jill Spall. The Award of Honor, which is 48 credits, you get a certificate and a silver pin, goes to Superintendent Dr. Kevin Newman and to Ms. Robin Williams. And we have the Award of Distinction for 84 credits, and that is a certificate and a starfish pin, which goes to our Chair Suzanne Seberg. So each of our board members, you should have a copy of your certificate in your packets there, and I believe VSBA will be sending the pins for each. Oh, they're already there? Good, okay. But I just want to say publicly, thank you all so much. I don't think that people understand that you don't just attend meetings here locally, but you do go to the state level to sit and try to be better, to be better effective at the work that you do as board members, sort of like a professional development for board members. And so we appreciate the days that you travel back and forth to do those things, to be what needs, to be who we need you to be here for our students and our staff and our community. So thank you all so much.
And the last spotlight that we have tonight is going to be Chief Keen, but before I call him up, I just want to remind everyone, during the September 27th meeting, I shared some changes and additional layers that we are adding to our safety plan in partnership with our police department and Chief Keen. Also shared that night that Chief Keen wanted to join us, but he was attending a conference in Roanoke. He's here tonight to share some of his thoughts on the partnership that we have with the police department, and I also wanted to highlight a few things that we've done since the meeting on September 27th. Last week, Sergeant Stump and Mr. Jordan, who you guys were introduced to during that same meeting, hosted a professional development on how we can improve our processes for guests visiting the building, and they did this with our school security officers and all of our greeters. They are also walking our schools and grounds to determine any updates we need to make to our individual school safety plan. Our police department and Manassas City Public School staff went through a presentation of the Evolve system that will be presented tonight during the discussion agenda, and if approved, Evolve will be just another layer of our safety plan to try to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. Also, Chief Keen created a plan to allow the community vitality officers to spend more time in our schools that also assisted us with not having to hire as many new security officers that we had originally planned from the September 27th superintendent spotlight. So with that, I want to turn it over to Chief Keen so he can share his thoughts on our partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Newman, school board, for allowing me to be here and be part of this. Just want to echo Dr. Newman's words. This is a true partnership. I think you just need to look around us and even watch the news. You'll see this divide between the law enforcement and the schools. That is not how we do things here in Manassas. We always say we do it differently here. We're all one family. Dr. Newman and I are in constant contact. Our staffs understand that expectation, and keeping our schools safe and secure, both with our students and your staff, is vitally important to all of us, and anytime there's an issue, we work together. We work through whatever issues at hand. We do it as a team, and we try to do it in the best financial way that we can as well. So when we talked about some of the concerns, both from parents, school staff, and students, Dr. Newman and I spoke. This latest initiative of bringing in our vitality officers is a way for us to help contribute to the schools, showing a little bit extra security, a little bit extra presence. Building relationships is what it's really about, and it gives those vitality officers a chance to start doing that with your staff and the students that are in the schools. And it also was able to save a little bit of money, so you didn't have to hire as many security officers. We appreciate the partnership and the openness, transparency that we have back and forth, and really the respect of asking us what our opinions are and what input we can have. I hope this continues. I think as long as the two of us are here, it will, but we're always available to answer questions if you may have any.
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. I just want to thank you and all your officers. I had the pleasure of being with a few of us up here at the city council meeting last night, and to see so many officers last night being recognition, being recognized for all the fantastic things they have done for our community, really spoke volumes. So I want to thank not just you, but also your staff.
I'll be glad to pass that on, and thank you for the kind words.
And I echo Board Member William's statement. Thank you for everything you're doing and the work you're putting forth and the partnership that we've developed, because it's true, not all divisions have such a strong relationship, and I think that's one of the things that makes our division a special division, is that we work well together and we work closely, and I think there's constant open communication between the division and the Manassas City Police Department. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. Have a great night.
We now move to board committees. We have several committee reports. I'm going to start with the academics committee.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Stevens. Yes, today, the academic committee met earlier this evening, went over a couple of presentations, one being the academic calendar and the other being an overview of program evaluations. We will look over those things and prepare those for the next school board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We have nothing from the policy committee, but from the education support committee. Ms. Ball?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. The educational support committee is in initial discussions with the firm of architects who have invited us to tour some model schools in both November and December. We look forward to building a fitting legacy to Jenny Dean in those trips. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have the finance committee.
Yeah, I just would like to announce that we are having an upcoming finance committee meeting, November 3rd at 5 o'clock at Central Office.
And nothing from the personnel committee. And then we move to citizens' comments. Ms. Alba, do we have anyone signed up for comments? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make comments? Okay. Moving on, we move to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Vice Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Christina Brooks and seconded by Jill Spall that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent, motion passes six to zero. Seven to zero, I'm sorry. Alright, we move on to the discussion agenda with support services.
Good evening. I have with me tonight Brooke Skerrhart from Alliance Technology. He will be talking to us tonight about Evolve technology and how, you heard the superintendent recently just mention about having another layer of security. This layer of security would be some, a scanning type of device as staff and students walk through the building so that we can prevent, or hopefully prevent, weapons entering into our building. So I'll let Brooks speak, and we'll be here for questions after the PowerPoint.
Thank you, and good evening, board members and everyone else here. So we've got a little bit of a presentation to go through. I'm going to try to keep it, keep it quick. Feel free to ask questions, and we'll just go ahead and get started. So I work with Alliance Technology Group. We are partnered with Evolve Technologies, and we work with them from installation, support, and sales standpoint. So as we were just talking about, it's all about adding another layer of security, right? So there's, it's important to still have, you know, locked doors, locked windows, have your security plans, but what Evolve is focused on doing is screening, you know, students and staff and visitors that are coming into the building, and it's specifically looking for weapons of mass casualty and trying to prevent them from getting into the school before anything happens. So we have all been familiar with metal detectors, and historically, for about the past, you know, 100 years, that was really the primary form of threat prevention. You still see it in airports even with TSA Pre-Check, even though they have what they call, you know, their body scanners now. What Evolve has done is they're using their technology to differentiate between common everyday items that are metallic versus potential threats, and it's alerting security staff and administrators when those potential threats are detected. So because you don't have to divest your items when you, you know, as you traditionally would to go through a metal detector, that drastically speeds up
as staff and students walk through the building so that we can prevent, or hopefully prevent, weapons entering into our building. So I'll let Brooks speak and we'll be here for questions after the PowerPoint.
Thank you and good evening, Board Members and everyone else here. So we've got a little bit of a presentation to go through. I'm going to try to keep it quick. Feel free to ask questions. And we'll just go ahead and get started. So I work with Alliance Technology Group. We are partnered with Evolve Technologies and we work with them from installation, support and sales standpoint. So as we were just talking about, it's all about adding another layer of security, right? So there's, it's important to still have, you know, locked doors, locked windows, have your security plans. But what Evolve is focused on doing is screening, you know, students and staff and visitors that are coming into the building. And it's specifically looking for weapons of mass casualty and trying to prevent them from getting into the school before anything happens. So we have all been familiar with metal detectors. And historically, for about the past, you know, 100 years, that was really the primary form of threat prevention. You still see it in airports even with TSA Pre-Check, even though they have what they call, you know, their body scanners now. What Evolve has done is they're using their technology to differentiate between common everyday items that are metallic versus potential threats. And it's alerting security staff and administrators when those potential threats are detected. So because you don't have to divest your items when you, you know, as you traditionally would to go through a metal detector, that drastically speeds up the time to get everyone into any building. We've seen in the past year an overwhelming amount of schools putting this in, primarily because metal detection wasn't feasible, right? It would take way too long for everyone to divest everything and get into school every day. But if we can do this in a way where it's free flowing and we can get people in in a reasonable amount of time, it's adding that extra layer of protection to the schools. So Manassas is considering two types of systems. One is a single lane and one is a dual lane. The reason I preference that is if you're looking at this slide right here, that's a little bit of what the system looks like. You can see that there's guards standing there in the middle. What they're doing is just monitoring, you know, students and staff and visitors as they're coming in throughout the day. And if a potential threat is detected, it's going to alert exactly where on that person that threat is detected. And they would ask them to step off to the side. And you can see some of those secondary tables. There's a video queued up in here and I'm hoping that it is able to play, but... Okay. So we'll go ahead and skip that. So you can see here, everyone is just flowing right through with all of their stuff. When alert is detected, if you'll see this tablet at the bottom part of the screen, it's going to tell you exactly where to look on that person. That way that secondary search is targeted and you're not, you know, spending a ton of time trying to figure out why the system went off. So here in a minute, you'll see that pop up on that tablet and they'll step off to the side. The green lights are indicating that everyone's fine. You can see everyone just walked through with everything as normal. There you go, the threat's detected. We're showing a bounding box on that screen exactly where that is. And then the student just asked to step over to that administrator in the green shirt. That detection went off on their bag, so they'll look exactly at that person's bag. You don't have to worry about wanding or screening any other, you know, part of them. So here's just another example. This is, you know, another high school. You can see everyone's coming in free flowing. The system's on the other side of the doors in this case, but you can see that everyone's just being greeted and walking into school as normal. Again, if a threat was to be detected, they would just ask that one person to step off to the side. The purpose of the visual alerting is that that person operating it can continue to have everyone else come in. We're trying to avoid those lines. Again, this is just a close-up view of that alerting that I've been referencing. So that bounding box is what's telling you, this is, you know, that area that you need to look for. In this case, it's obviously that person's right hip. If it was on a bag, it would be showing it on the bag. And again, there's just it in motion. So we've talked about some of this already. The targeted searches are key because not only when an alert's detected, now you know where to search. You're not playing that guessing game. You know, I'll give a quick aside. One of the, you know, traditional problems with saying metal detection's going to solve this is you walk through a metal detector, you have a big belt buckle on, you slip a pistol behind that belt buckle. It happens way more frequently than people would like to admit. And you walk through that metal detector, it goes off. You're asked to step over to the side. They wind your belt buckle and they say you're good to go. Because of the technology here, we know that the belt buckle's not going to set this system off. So we would ask them to obviously go back through. And that would obviously, that would be a red flag for whoever's operating it because they're aware of what it's detecting versus what it's not. The algorithms onboard are constantly learning and getting smarter. So part of the system and the package that you all would be receiving is those updated softwares. So weapons obviously change, benign items, you know, change. And so as the technology learns and gets better about what's a threat versus what's not a threat, and as threats change, you will be receiving those updates as well. There's, you know, because there's more intelligence behind this, there's a ton of analytics that we can capture. We can see what your alarm rates are, you know, by individual entrances. We can see how many people are coming through. We can predict based on different sensitivities what your alarm rates would be. And really what this does is allow the staff here to operate the fleet of systems in an efficient manner and adjust staffing as needed and adjust sensitivity levels as needed. Again, this is just an example of what some of those dashboards can look like. And here's an example of, you know, some schools, you know, elect to do this and you can put your own, you know, logos on there. It makes people feel a little bit more at home. Those are just interchangeable panels. But a lot of schools have competitions as to, you know, who can design their panel the best and just, you know, provide some morale. You can see that at this point Evolve's screening over 11 million people per month. And these are just some examples of the organizations that they work with. There's also several, you know, schools, you know, in the area and throughout the country that are operating this as well. As it relates to Manassas, this is an example of what the system deployment would look like at Osborne High School. So you can see there's the main entrance and there's that secondary entrance. I'm sure you guys are more familiar with the building than I am, but I have taken a look at it. Those two entrances would have one dual lane each. Part of the rationale on this was we try to get an idea of approximately how many students are going through each door in the morning and then in what period of time. A dual lane can screen 4,000 people per hour. So once we talk with the administration and understand how many people are coming through and in what period of time, that's how we make our recommendations on single versus dual lane. And you can see over here at that second building that's referred to as the Johnson Wing, that is a main entrance, so visitors sometimes do come in there. So obviously it would be important to capture folks coming through there. This is again, just an aerial view. You'll see as students traverse between those buildings, there will be a single lane there. And, you know, a recommended school official outside just making sure people aren't, you know, wandering off and they are going through this.
Also, we've added one additional single lane going out of the West Wing Door, coming out of Osborne as well into this. So we have two dual lanes, one at the Auditorium Entrance, one at the Main Entrance, one at the Johnson Center and one as you exit out of the West Wing of Osborne.
Thank you.
So in front of you now is the annual cost for this service. Approximately $100,000, $123,000 the first year, roughly $104,000 each of the subsequent three years after that. Total investment of a little over $435,000 over the next four-year period of time. Okay. You know, one of the things that intrigued us about this system is that we have about a little over 2,000 students that come into the school in 15 minutes period of time, from about 7:50 to 8:05, 8:10 every morning. How do we screen those students and those staff members without, and get them in in a timely manner? And the Evolve system is a way for us to be able to do that. We believe that with the systems that we're going to have in place, that we'll be able to add additional layer of security, give more comfort and reliability to our staff. You know, when we have a report of a weapon in the school or if we have an incident in the community, it is a very stressful time for our staff and students. And so when we, if we were to enhance our systems by this, this will give us another layer of security, another layer of comfort to our staff and our community that we're doing everything that we possibly can to protect our students and staff. Are there any questions, concerns, comments?
Mr. Hawkins, I just want to add that our proposal to the Board would be to start at Osborne to see how it goes and then branch out to Metz and then down to our intermediates, then to elementary at some point. But we want to start at Osborne and see how it goes.
I had a question. You kind of answered it. My concern, well, thanks for the video. And as it showed the students coming down the hall through the device, my question is the accuracy when the quantity of students increases. So you stated that 4,000, it can scan 4,000 people an hour, but how is the accuracy as far as, you know, kids are real creative once they find out you have a layer of protection and they might put it in their shoe, so...
So in terms of the quantity, the quantity was not going to affect the accuracy of the system. You can actually be side-by-side walking through it. The only thing that would potentially slow it down is if you had a higher alarm rate on secondary screening, right? So, but the system accuracy is not affected by how many people are coming through. We could get four people together and all walk through and it's going to alert on, you know, where it needs to alert. That would just put more pressure, you know, on your staff, right? And there's always human error involved in things. So it might take them longer to say, you know, "I need to grab Brooks. I need to grab Andy," you know, that quickly. So that all comes with training and I can say from Alliance's perspective, right, we've been partnered with Evolve for almost a year now. And we've done several, you know, large deployments. We're looking at four systems here. We've done deployments of up to 65 systems in almost 30 schools and rolled it out at once. And so we've got a lot of experience from how to coach, you know, the people that are going to be operating it and giving you those best practices. And we're going to, you know, kind of hold your hand in the beginning to make sure that it's implemented effectively. And those best practices will come at that point.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. Go ahead. Okay, so, quick question, actually I have two. One is, what is the percentage of people who are getting by? What's the percentage of actual weapons that are getting past this system in any amount of time?
Sure, so I can answer that broadly and we can get more specific from there. One, it depends on the areas that we're in. Two, it depends on what students are bringing to school, what their common items are. Some districts have things, have kids coming to school with four backpacks each. Others are coming to school with a laptop. That's going to drastically affect the alarm rates. I can say generally speaking, most schools, and again, this depends on there's varied sensitivities. That's part of what we've discussed with Manassas' staff is it's all about your risk tolerance, right? The lower the sensitivity, the more likely you are to miss certain things. And the higher the sensitivity, the more likely you're going to capture, you know, smaller and smaller and smaller, right? So I can say on an average though, most schools we see running at a 15% alarm rate. And that's just from my experience, right, from the districts that I've worked with, I would say are in that 15% alarm rate. So that would mean that, you know, any given morning, about 15% would be asked to step to the side. Typically those secondary screens are a matter of seconds though, right? It's, you know, you need to take something out of your pocket or we need to look in your bag real quick. Everyone else keeps moving, they do that and they send them on their way. Again, you know, if you get more granular, who's going to be walking back through? That comes down to again, like what the Manassas risk tolerance levels are going to be. So there's variability there.
Okay, so, but what is the, I'm assuming you have tested this. So what is the fail rate? How many weapons get past the system? Not how many get alarms, how many get past it?
Got it.
Percentage of the getting past?
So that goes back to what are you considering a weapon? Because as you adjust the sensitivity, we've got people that all they care about are handguns and anything, you know, up to automatic rifles. And they don't really, they don't care about knives. So they, so they're not going to consider a knife as a weapon, right, that gets through? As opposed to someone that says, "We want to be able to find knives" or "We want to, you know, be able to find IEDs." Then they're going to set their sensitivity higher from a, to directly answer your question, right? I can say I haven't seen, you know, weapons that the school districts have considered weapons, you know, go through. But in some sense, you're not, you're never going to know, right?
Oh, I meant in testing.
Oh, in testing? In testing Evolve, in testing, Evolve stands that they will, they will be able to detect all firearms. So that's where they draw the line. And then as you get into knives, it's something that Evolve is very open about. You're not going to catch 100% of knives. And that's just because as you start to detect there, you get down to traditional like, you know, a pocket knife that only a metal detector's going to find. But you're going to find a lot of other stuff. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So Mr. Gerhart, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate. Today was the 40th school shooting of the year in St. Louis. You know, so this is near and dear to all of our hearts. Can I ask, in terms of the four-year commitment that you're presenting, what happens if there's a major upgrade? I mean, if we're renting this equipment, will we be eligible to install the newest and best equipment as the term of the lease?
Yeah, so that was part of our discussion with the school system. Right now, Evolve offers you can either lease it, which is what you guys are electing to do, or do a capital purchase. And to your point, yes, obviously technology changes. Part of the advantage is because it's a lease, you know, if Evolve comes out two years from now with a new system, it's hard to say how they would, whether they would just say, "Here's, we're going to take the old hardware back and give it to you at no extra cost." Maybe, it could be like a car lease, right? Here's your upgrade, you know, a year early and you're going to pay a percentage more, but you have that latest and greatest. And then at the end of the four years, you'd have the option to either, you know, walk away from it or renew your lease. And then obviously at that point, you would receive new hardware as well. As opposed to a capital purchase where you own it. The systems are rated for seven years. So within, you know, with a capital purchase, you would own that. And then at the end of that, it's still an initial four-year agreement for the software and subscription. You would have the option to just keep your hardware and extend your subscription. So those are kind of the differences there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
My colleagues up here asked many questions that I had had, so thank you for those answers. And to Mr. Hollingsworth's point about the shoes, how it's going to grab everybody from the top of their head down to their feet?
Correct. So it's creating a magnetic field between those towers that you saw. And so the only thing that I would just recommend, I haven't actually seen it happen. I'm not quite tall enough to make it work. I've taken test pieces and everything and held it over my head. You'll see a lot of people walk through metal detectors like this. We don't encourage that. There's no reason to try to show what's in your hands. We don't care really. And so as long as you stay within that magnetic field, and I'd have to check on the exact height. I believe it's seven and a half feet. So again, it would have to be like a pretty tall person and then like having something in their hat. If you, again, this is part of the training, right? If, as we're telling operators what to do, we wouldn't tell someone that's 6'5" to take their hat off and hold it like that, right? If you saw that happen, you would ask them to put it down by their side because you would want that to be caught in the magnetic field.
And you may not be able to answer this question. What is the most common, I don't want to necessarily say weapon, but what is the most common item that is caught from these?
So I can generally answer that. I would say generally that when we're, that is detected by the system, it's firearms. And it depends, again, by regions in terms of, you know, open carry, you know, laws and things of that nature. I can say that from my experience with the system and testing that we've done and then also in districts and other organizations that we work with that have it involved and we're aware of things they're catching, most of it is firearms. That said, I would say the next most common thing, which is one of the biggest reasons to do something like this, is the deterrent factor. We find more things outside that have been discarded because people, either their friends text them, "This is going on," or they see it. And I would say that next in line to that are people that come up, look at it and turn around and go back to their car. Which obviously those last two scenarios are better, right? We don't, you don't necessarily want to be finding weapons or threats once they're, you know, at your front door. So I would say those two things are common occurrences. And then after that, it would be firearms.
And BB guns?
So BB guns, it depends. And the reason is it depends on what the BB gun's made of. So right, this is, it's still a magnetic field, so it has to be metallic. The other thing is, is if, you know, to get more technical, what Evolve is doing is they're looking specifically for the slides and barrels on guns, shrapnel condensed together and then large tactical blades. So if a BB gun has a component like that, then yes, there's a chance. But no, it's not going to be 100% of the time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gerhart and Mr. Hawkins, thank you for presenting. I think many of us, once upon a time, never thought we'd be looking at purchasing items like these for our schools to protect our students and our staff. It's not a fun thing for us to have to think about, but here we are. I first have a couple of questions from Chair Seberg, who's participating virtually. Mr. Hawkins, I think these two questions may be for you. Will we need to hire additional personnel to man, support?
With tonight's action and in the consent agenda, we agree, the School Board has approved to hire four additional security staff through a security firm to provide additional staff to help man these devices. So these devices may not be, these doors may not be open all day long. For example, the Auditorium Door at Osborne will be open in the morn- will be open in the morning from seven fifty to, say, eight fifteen to allow students to come into the school, but the doors will be closed off during the day, so we won't need staff there. We'll have staff all the time at the main entrance, all the time at the Johnson Center, and during class changes, there's a west wing, um, entrance and exit there primarily. Those doors should remain, all the other, all of our doors should be remained locked at all times. But when we have a lot of students during class change, or when they come to school in the morning, we will need, uh, those areas manned. We've, um, Superintendent and I met with Mr. Flugrav, and we have, uh, charted out the staffing that we're going to need to man those areas during those time periods.
Okay, thank you. And then the next question is, um, what is our funding source for this?
Well, we're going to, it's going to come through our operating fund, and we will, uh, we've, we've identified funding in that, in that area, but when we start with the FY twenty-four budget, this will be incorporated in, into the, um, the budget for FY twenty-four in years thereafter.
Um, so, Mr. Hawkins, I'm sorry, I'm putting you back on the spot. These are my questions now.
Okay.
Um, so, legislation was recently passed at the federal level that provided grants for school divisions to enhance security. And it, I, I don't remember what the exact wording was. Is it possible that we could look to get funding through one of those grants? Do you know anything about it as of yet?
Uh, no, not really. I don't, we haven't received any details yet. The state does have a security, uh, grant, but it's, um, generally speaking, a very small amount, and the school board has to match that grant a hundred percent. So it's not even ten percent or twenty percent like most of them are. The state grant is a hundred percent. And, um, so, uh, that also puts a financial burden on us, but we will be exploring any and all grants that we can get to, uh, to help provide funding for this service.
Okay. And then, this might be for you, Mr. Gerhart. Um, talk to me about the sensitivities. What, what, what exactly do you mean by sensitivities, and what our threshold for tolerance is? Because personally, as a school board member, a teacher, a parent, I want my risk threshold to be at a zero. I don't want anything coming in. So, can you talk to me on that?
Sure. So, so, um, I'm happy to discuss, and I think to start, it's important to, like, to put ourselves in this mindset, or, and, and, you know, think about it from the outside of, right? We, we've been hearing layers of security. Um, this is an additional layer. This is not the silver bullet, and I'll be the first one to tell you this. I mean, we've worked with a ton of school boards, um, and, and districts. This doesn't mean all the doors are unlocked. You don't have teachers in the hall making sure people aren't propping them open, you know? You aren't, you aren't, uh, interacting with students in the morning and saying, hey, like, how are you doing today? Those things are all still important. In terms of the sensitivity levels, um, I guess I'll, I mean, I'll, I'll say this. Uh, I can give you generally, it's an A through F sensitivity. Um, th- those sensitivity levels are a conversation that we have with you all in terms of, um, you know, an honest conversation of exactly what we're looking for and what we're not. I'm happy to tell you that here. Um, I can say typically, those are pretty pri, like, private conversations, um, just because, from your security standpoint, you wouldn't necessarily want people to know that. So I'm not trying to not tell you, I just wanted to, I always try to make this, uh, you know, very clear to people that this is, this is a very serious topic. Um, so I'm typically careful, I'm happy to talk about it, but I'm typically careful to say, you know, in, in front of, um, you know, whoever you want, uh, what, what those sensitivity levels mean.
Okay, thank you. No, that, that makes sense.
So, it's up to you.
That makes sense. Um, and then, uh, talk to me a bit about smarter over time, because we think about things that are smarter over time, where a system, an electronic or a computer-based system, over time, it learns patterns and is able to, for lack of a better word, and this is not the appropriate word, evolve as it gets to know the users. Is this system something that works that way, or does new software have to be installed?
So, so the, the system, uh, you're benefiting from all the other systems out there, right? So it's not gonna be specific to learning your population. That will obviously contribute to, as the system learns, but as that artificial intelligence algorithm learns through, you know, through testing and then through it being actually in theater and deployed, those soft, Evolve is working on their algorithms to make sure that they're ignoring non-threats and catching more threats, as both of those types of objects change. Typically, um, it's, you, you'll have the option of whether you want to push those software updates, but what Evolve does as a company, and that's part of your four-year agreement, is they're alerting you, hey, we have this new software update. These are the benefits of it. We're not gonna for, they're not gonna force it upon you, um, but, uh, you will have the option to benefit from as the system is getting smarter. Does, does that answer the question?
Yes. So, so it's not that the automatic, the updates occur automatically. You notify us, we have to take that next step.
Correct. And we're happy to, you know, have a conversation with you about it. Everyone's gonna say, hey, this is available, here's the pros, here's the cons, um, and then you guys would elect whether or not you want, you know, to upgrade that software, which is all included. It's not, there's no, it's not like additional stuff. Um, that's just part of the, the, the four-year agreement.
And then, let me ask one final question. Privacy concerns. I know in the past that in the larger world, especially when it comes to airport security, people had concerns that some of these different devices, maybe not this, were an invasion of privacy-
Mm-hmm.
...because they detected too much.
Right.
So, how do we handle that? Because we're working with people who are under the age of eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
So, can you talk to me about that?
Sure. So, um, this is a, this is a very common question that we address, especially before deploying in sys, in school systems, and we'll help you communicate to parents and the broader community, um, uh, you know, what those concerns may or may not be. We have health and safety information that I believe we've, we've shared with the district, but if not, we can, we can pass that along. Um, I can say, so, one, uh, it's, you know, it's not, there's no personal informa, informa, information being collected on any of this. Um, I can say the other thing that we typically see schools actually opting to go with Evolve versus other, other options, is because you have that component that is alerting to where you searched and who it was. And so, one, if a threat actually was caught, you have that, you know, image, and you can say, here's exactly what we did. And then, two, if there's concerns about invasion of privacy, you can show, this is exactly why we stopped this person. Here's where we looked, and this is what was found. Um, and you have, you, you know, evidence of that. Um, and that typically alleviates it from medical concerns. Um, again, I can pass that document along, um, but it's, you know, it's safe to walk through for, you know, anyone. Um, you know, there's a couple of things that, um, I've seen districts do where they've erred on the side of caution for certain medical conditions, um, and it's more the district opting to, opting to err on that side of caution, and they have a different procedure for some of those students. But again, that's all stuff that, that we'll talk through from a training and, and deployment standpoint.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for, um, answering my questions. I think this is a very new thing for all of us. It's a place where we didn't think we would be.
Mm-hmm.
But as, um, Board Member Spall said, you, this is, this is a reality, and we have to take the steps we can to protect our students. So, thank you. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for presenting, and thank you, Mr. Hawkins. One more question.
Sorry. Um, Mr. Hawkins, when are we looking to deploy this if we were to move forward?
So it's up for discussion tonight, and we will have it as, um, an agenda item. If the, so, if the board so chooses, we'll have it as, and it, as an action item at the next school board meeting. Okay? So once, if it's approved at the next school board meeting, then it will take approximately six weeks, I think, before the devices and everything can be installed and deployed.
But we're, it's imminent. We're talking about this school year.
Well, it'll be, yes, it'll be this school year. If we, if we're going to do it, it will be this school year. And it'll probably be, you know, when you think about how much time we have left, and when the board would approve it, if it so chose to do so, then it would probably be around the first of the year, January.
Okay, and one more question. Um, if we, how bound are we to this four-year program? If we find that it's glitchy, or I'm reading an article here that, um, subway weapons scanners can't tell handguns from laptops, like, if we find out that we're unhappy with the system, are we committed to four years?
So, you know, all of our contracts have non-performance clauses, okay?
Okay.
So if they're not, you know, if we have things that are not performing well, we're gonna be working with the vendor to try to correct those mistakes or those errors or those problems that we're encountering. But at the end of the day, if, if their product will not produce, like they say it will, and we have, you know, I think this is a very unlikely scenario, because they are, are screening now over eleven million people a day through all sorts of venues, major stadiums, um, huge school divisions throughout the, uh, United States. So I doubt that we're gonna have this problem, but just so you know, all contracts have a way of, of, if a vendor doesn't perform the service that they're contracted for, that we, we would be able to, uh, mitigate that situation.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any more questions? Thank you. Thank you for presenting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got another presentation.
And then, Mr. Hawkins, you have another presentation for us?
Yes, good evening again. We're gonna talk tonight about the, um, FY twenty-four, which is next school year's capital improvement plan. You know, one of the best things this school board and other school boards have done is dedicated three million dollars for us to continue to keep our facilities at, at, in pristine shape and provide a quality instructional environment for our students. These funds every year are used to maintain our facilities, enhance our facilities, to give our students a quality instructional environment. So for FY twenty-four, we're talking, uh, you, you can see that we have funds set aside for division-wide technology upgrades. These are not for, um, laptops or Chromebooks or anything like that. They, this funds, these funds are to make sure that our infrastructure is always current and will be able to handle the load that our students have. Our school division is very different from most in that we have all of our students, pre-K through twelve, have been issued or have access to a, a laptop, each single child or Chromebook throughout the division, from pre-K to twelve. When you have that kind of volume, it puts a strain on our system. These funds help us make sure that our infrastructure is strong enough to handle, um, everything that we, we have. We also have funds set aside in the hopes of, in, in case we need, uh, uh, additional buses due to, uh, uh, growth, division-wide trailers, if we need to have those funds to provide for growth as well. We have a million dollars set aside in FY twenty-four to begin the process of replacing the roof at Osborne High School. Uh, that will probably be a multi-year, uh, project. We have over three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of roof at Osborne, and that roof is nearing its end of its useful life. We have a couple of hundred thousand dollars in this year's, uh, budget, CIP, to have the engine, architect and engineering work that needs to be done. And we hope to begin and do a portion of it each summer, um, until completed. We have, um, also, in FY twenty-four, we have some, um, a fire alarm system, a portion of the fire alarm system at Metz, uh, that we are doing. We've got some money in FY twenty-three, an additional amount of money in FY twenty-four to provide, uh, um, the updated fire alarm system, the most up-to-date fire alarm system available on the market. All of our schools have these new fire alarms, except for Metz and Osborne. Metz will have it, uh, will, will be installed this, uh, summer, and the following summer, we're planning to do it at Osborne. And then, at the bottom, for FY twenty-four, you see at Hayden Round, um, we have some window and ass, and parking lot replacements out there in FY twenty-four. I've concentrated so far on FY twenty-four because that's what the school board will be approving. We do have a general plan for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight out, out there in the future. This is sort of a, just a general blueprint of where we're going to be, uh, and what projects we have on the horizon. But the CIP will be approved, will be changed annually and be approved annually as we get, as we get to those years. As you can see, we have a substantial amount of money out in FY twenty-six for the replacement of the Dean's School, and we have money set aside in FY twenty-five to begin, or the architectural and engineering services for that, for this school. We have to determine, as a, as a division, what this new school is going to look like. Um, I can't remember whether, I think it was Ms. Stevens, Ms. Spol, Ms. Spall, I guess, spoke to, uh, earlier tonight about us going to visit other schools that have already been built throughout the division, uh, throughout the state. We're going to, uh, visit schools in Loudoun, Arlington, and Virginia Beach in the next several months, uh, to see whether or not there are other schools out there that meet our needs that we would like to have. If not, we can always go back to, to duplicate, uh, Baldwin at, at this site. But we want to go see some of the other schools that are out there, um, and see if they would be better, meet our needs. So those are the projects that are in immediate future. Um, out, in the out years, you'll see, we continue to have money to being spent on the concession stand at Osborne, some window and door replacements, restroom refurbishment at Metz, and, um, so you can see all the different projects that we have outgoing in the out years. But primarily tonight, we've wanted to concentrate on FY twenty-four, which is the next school year, and we have, I have, uh, highlighted all of those projects. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments at this time?
Just a comment.
Yes?
These line items are consistent with what we've been presented the past year, couple of years, so, um, I don't see anything new, and we've all seen this a couple of times, so thank you for that again.
Thank you.
And, let me just check, Ms., uh, Chair Seberg does not have any questions on this either. So, thank you, Mr. Hawkins, and like Ms. Williams said, we have seen this before. This is not the first time it's come before us, and we have asked questions previously at committee meetings, and committee meetings are open to the public. Um, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think we all do. And then we move on to new business, which is school board legislative priorities, which is me. Um, every year before the start of the new legislative session, in the fall, we meet with our legislators, our state senator and our delegate, to discuss our legislative priorities. We present them at our legislative, joint legislative breakfast with the city council. Before we meet for the legislative breakfast, we do share the legislative priorities with the, um, school division, with the community. And I'm just gonna give just a quick, brief overview. Um, as you know, because we just completed, we, um, have the new strategic plan in place. Our legislative priorities are based on our strategic plan, inclusive and collaborative learning environment with a culture of caring. Sorry, my pages are sticking together. Quality workforce, strong family and community partnerships. So all of our legislative priorities for this upcoming legislative session are based on that. So just a quick overview of the legislative priorities for 2022. Provide additional in-classroom support for teachers. SOQ and accreditation flexibility. SOQ stands for standards of quality. College and career readiness. Uh, schools that are meeting under exceeding state standards should be provided with even greater flexibility on various standards to allow students to further begin exploring career fields. Full funding for the standards of quality, as we know, if you've been to school board meetings or finance committee meetings, the standards of quality is our basic funding for our schools, and it only covers between sixty and sixty percent of, sixty-six percent of what it costs to run a school. So that's the only guaranteed money we get at the state level. Um, so, full funding for the standards of quality. Manassas City Public Schools urges the Virginia Legislature to consider and provide for the actual cost of meeting SOQ requirements, not just the minimum assumed necessary by the state. Therefore, the school board of the City of Manassas supports legislation providing full funding for implementing the SOQ, including the cost of support personnel and not diverting public resources away from public education. Next legislative priority is remove attendance requirements for accreditation. The school board of the City of Manassas supports legislation that removes attendance under eight VAC, VAC twenty dash one-three-one dash three-eight-oh as a school quality for accreditation measurement. Establishing absent students as a measure of accreditation is divine, defined as those who are enrolled in a given school who missed ten percent or more of the school year regardless of the reason, unfairly discriminates against schools with high transient minority populations, at-risk students, and working students. This measurement places an unfunded mandate on schools who must utilize resour- This measurement places an unfunded mandate on schools who must utilize resources for attendance compliance tracking. We support the legislative priorities that focus on teacher salary increases and cost of competing allocation. Once again, we refer back to the SOQs. When the General Assembly says they are giving all schools five percent raise, a seven percent raise, they're only figuring in those that are SOQ positions. So, once again, those raises only cover sixty to sixty percent of our school personnel. We have to come up with the rest of it. Restore education funding to pre-economic recession levels. This is talking about the recession of two thousand and eight, we are now in two thousand and twenty-two. Funding of public education is a shared responsibility. While state and local authorities work in partnership to ensure equality education for students in the Commonwealth, passed changes to Virginia's funding for public education widen the gap between the true local-level cost of providing programs and services and the amount reimbursed by the state. Repeal or modify proffer limitations. Legislation passed in 2016 severely limited the ability of local governments to require crash proffers in exchange for approval of development applications that necessitate new infrastructure investments, including school construction and expansion. The restrictions put significant new tax burdens on existing residents, something we all know, potentially leading to overcrowded classrooms by forcing hard-pressed school divisions to cut back on needed capital projects. Modify advanced studies diploma requirements to encourage more rigorous coursework. Under current Virginia requirements, students seek an advanced studies diploma must earn credits from courses in at least three different science disciplines from among earth science, biology, chemistry, or physics, or the completion of a sequence of science courses required for the international baccalaureate diploma. Forcing students to devote time to three separate disciplines penalizes those who seek to pursue the most advanced sequence of courses available. For example, pre-AP biology, pre-AP chemistry, AP chemistry, and AP biology. Offering a second option will enable highly motivated students to take their study of science to the highest possible level by focusing on fewer areas. Computer coding to satisfy World Language graduation program requirements. Coding makes computers and technology work. It is becoming the second language of the twenty-first century and the key to the technological understanding students need for success in future careers. Studies suggest that American companies will have an abundance of job openings that require computer science expertise, yet they will not find enough U.S. college graduates to fill them. This industry problem presents an opportunity for Virginia students if they get the freedom to learn coding as part of their preparation for higher education. Once again, these priorities will be presented in early December at the legislative breakfast to our state legislators. Any questions? It, it was a lot, but it's all really important information, and these are legislative priorities because they enable our schools to perform at their best, at their peak performance, and offer the best education to all of the students. So, moving on to board member comments, first, we have Ms. DeBee.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I have a few things that I wanted to discuss this evening. First, I would just like to thank Mr. Flugrath and Dr. Newman for being involved, being involved in such meetings, such as the RSVP meeting that I got to attend at Osborne last week, where Osborne students in the leadership class got to discuss different things that they felt were important at Osborne and at school in general, including student engagement, CTE, which are the career and technical classes, and some of our core classes at Osborne. So, that was one thing I wanted to highlight. And next, I would just like to say for seniors at Osborne, some early decision and early action college applications are going to be due November first, and this is also Virginia Application Week, so I would suggest turning them in if you haven't already, and if you need help, to go to the College and Career Center. And lastly, I would just like to say congratulations to all the Apple and Pear Award winners and our school board members for their recognitions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, we have Ms. Spall.
Thank you. I would like to thank Chief Keen and the Police Department for their partnership, specifically the vitality officers and the safety plans for our schools. I'd also like to congratulate the Apple and Pear Award winners. Even at three times a year, there are always more people we can catch being awesome. I don't know that we've discussed it exactly tonight, but the calendar choices are going to be coming out soon, and so I hope people will look out for those and participate in calendar survey options. I recently attended the Airport CTE event, which was very, very good, and I'm gonna, just look at the door contest at, around, and I participated, or I stopped by the fun run at Hayden last weekend, I believe. I guess my, my only end comments are that I have served on the board for one year, as of yesterday, I think, and I wanted to say that I'm proud of and appreciate this group of people. These are community members like myself who choose to work collaboratively, collaboratively with one another and city staff to serve our role in the mission of educating the children of the community. They're able to do the people's business without disruption and always remain productive regarding board business and agenda items. There are no arguments, rather, there is reasoned discussion and respectful interaction. Every community needs this, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Vice Chair. First, I'd like to definitely congratulate all of our Apple and Pear winners. Everybody from the bus driver to the custodian, to the teacher, to our administrators, everybody plays a very important role in this school system, and I love that so many of us actually do with a smile on our face and excitement. So, thank you all for that. Ms. DeBee, as always, thank you for your comments, and I'd also like to share that Ms. Island could not make it tonight, she had a school commitment, so she was not able to be here, and she wanted me to let you know. I, also, in reference to the Evolve technology, I, I would love for, I would love to hear our community and get some of their thoughts about this. I think it's a big deal. It, like Mrs. Stevens and Ms. Spall already commented, who knew we would even be considering this? So, I would love to hear what the community has to say. So, if anybody's watching, pass it along and let us know. I also would like to commend Mrs. Spall for her efforts and her, all of, everything she did for the Osborne and Osborne Park alumni fundraiser we had this past weekend. I think it was a success, thank you very much. It was just fantastic, and it raises money for our students and scholarships, and it's such important, it's such an important thing to do, and I just appreciate all of your hard work and efforts in that. Anything else? One more thing I'd just like to say, as I get up very, well, not too early, but walk my dog for three miles in the morning, it's starting to get dark, and I'm seeing the kids at the bus stop, so be careful as you're coming and going in the mornings and the evenings. Our students are out there waiting for the bus, so definitely use caution, and that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you. This Friday, we have Career and Conversation Day at Osborne in the library. I think it's a really good program to come out, we're estimating about four hundred students to come out and speak to about thirty different businesses and companies so they can get insight on what it's like to look for a career field and career options. So, please, come out, see what's going on, and support. I also like to thank and congratulate all the Apple and Pear winners and all my school board for all, for all that you do, each one of you. So, thank you, everyone, and all the presentations that we received earlier. Have a good evening.
And Ms. Brooks.
I also want to thank my school board members, my fellow school board members, for all the effort that you put into ensuring that our schools are wonderful and that we get the extra training to help us do our jobs. And also, thank all the staff members and teachers for all the work that you do, and congratulate the ones who are apple and pear this time. You know, it's always nice to be able to recognize someone who went above and beyond, and, you know, get to change it up each time, but it's always appreciated, and, you know, all of, all of our staff is appreciated. And I hope everyone has a really good final week of October, and be safe on Halloween, and watch out for all those little kiddos. Thank you.
Mr. Eichbahl?
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to echo my fellow board members and thank everyone for their presentations tonight, and congratulate our Apple and Pear Award recipients. Thank you all for making a lasting and positive impact on each of our students' lives. Each one of you contributes so much to making MCPS a better place for all, and we are really grateful that you're here with us. And Mr. Hollingsworth just touched on this, but lastly, I just want to thank our CTE supervisor, Chris Taylor, and Delegate Michelle Maldonado for partnering with MCPS for Career and Conversation Day this Friday morning. This event is going to be a great opportunity for our students to explore potential career paths and employers after graduation. Events like these are exactly what we need here at MCPS, and I'm really excited for our students. So, I ask that anyone watching, please spread the word to students who may have interest in participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eichbahl. Chair Seberg shared that she does not have any comments, so I will do my comments. I wanted to talk first about the Evolve technology. Like her presenter, Mr. Gerhart, said, it's a layer of safety and security for our students. There's nothing one hundred percent. None of us ever thought we'd be looking at something like this, but we have to do everything we can to ensure that everyone who walks through our doors is safe and as safe as we can possibly make them. So, it's something we are going to be considering, and like Ms. Williams said, please, we need your input, because what we're doing, the decisions we make concerning the Evolve technology, they're about you, they're about your family members, they're about your most precious people, your children. So, please, share with us your thoughts on them, on the technology, as we move forward and make a decision. And then, I wanted to share some of the things that I've been doing this past week. I've been to a couple of Teacher Town Halls and listening sessions with the Virginia Education Association, hearing directly from teachers as to where they are and what's important and what their concerns are, and I'm, I really appreciate everything they say and everything they tell me, and I, my ears are always open to listening, and I do know we're putting things in the pipeline to support teachers, and one of our legislative priorities is providing our teachers with more support, because it is something we always need. This Saturday, I'll be attending the Youth, Mental Health, and First Aid Training. It's an all-day training in Woodbridge, so I look forward to that. And I really want to thank Chief Keen and Dr. Newman for this relationship that we've built between our school division and our local police department. In many school divisions and many communities, it's not like this. They're not partners. In many ways, they're adversaries, and we're teaching our students that our local police force is somewhere you can turn to if you need help, and that we're partners, and that we both care equally about every student who walks in our building. So, I want to thank Chief Keen and Dr. Newman for that, and I'm excited that we have the vitality officers who are spending more time in our schools. I think that's a great thing. And as everyone else said, thank you to our Apple and Pear Award winners, because every employee is an educator, every employee plays a very important role in the education of our children, from getting them to school and home from school, to making sure they're fed, to making sure they're recognized and they're taught, and they're seen as valued members of the community. So, thank you to each and every one of you who received an Apple or a Pear Award. We really do appreciate you. And I think that's all I have for tonight. I would like to make a move, I would, sorry, my computer was glitching on me. Would you like to make a move?
Vice Chair, I'd like, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph One of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph One, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 22230233.
Second.
Jill Spall made a motion, seconded by Carl Hollingsworth, that the school board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph One of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph One, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2223-0233. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're moving to a closed session.